Join me in a moment of silence in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Three, Citizens' Comments for Non-Agenda Items. The floor is open for non-agenda items. Here are no citizens' comments, we'll move on to council comments. Who would like to start, Minnie?
Great.
I've got nothing.
Same.
I attended the Ocean Reef Fest on Saturday, which was a pretty great event, great turnout. And last night, I went to Beavard County Commissioners Meeting on the sewer line issue. And all I can say is, they're working on it. But there was some good presentations made there, and I don't think this is anything that's going to be an overnight, now presented silver bullet there, it's just something that has to be done and things needed repaired. The infrastructure is definitely something that was talked about there the whole time. It was interesting. I'll tell you what was interesting about it, just from a perceptual, as big as the problem has been in the press and through social media, the shame did, nobody showed up. So, it's an interesting perception of an issue like that, and other than county and city officials from a different area, I don't think there was 20 people there. So, anyway, comments.
Moving on, the City Manager's Report, Courtney.
Mayor, going on, I'll just go to that item that you were just speaking about. The county commission did decide on three major items, and the first was to replace the forest main all the way down to the South Beaches area, and then also apply for a revolving loan fund to finance that. And the second item was to approve a task order for Kimley Horn to do the smoke test in Satellite Beach. That was an idea of mine and Jim Helmners, who's the utility director, in trying to address the issue of private residences, so the county can slip line or replace the pipes throughout the county area in their system, but we still have the problem of the drainpipe of private residences and the cracks and the leaks in those areas. And we strongly believe that that's a major source of the problem. So, the smoke test is designed to reveal that largely to not only us, but to the resident as well. And then we'll be using that information to design a program and apply for funding probably through the lagoon tax, as well as through other funding sources, to incentivize the private owners to replace their drainpipes. The cost of that can run anywhere from $350 to $2,500. So, it depends on the length of their yard and things like that. And then the other item was that they were going to move up drastically and reprioritize the replacement, pipe replacement, on the beachside areas. So, that's going to be moved up tremendously. So, we're expecting that work to go quickly, much quicker. And then, the other issue that was discussed was the idea of using tourism tax dollars to pay for these items. And what I'd like to do is, if you don't mind, outline the problems I see with that and send that to you all, and if you all are okay with that, we can send that to the county commission. I think, my biggest fear as being a member of the committee for the lagoon tax is that funds are being, will be diverted from the lagoon tax to the utilities to pay for maintenance. And I don't think people envision that when they approved the lagoon tax. I also have a fear that tourism tax dollars will also be diverted to pay for utilities, and I don't think the voters envisioned the use of those funds either to be paid, to be used for that purpose. So, I'd like to outline the problems that we would see with that, and then maybe some possible compromises on that, because I do appreciate Representative Fine's interest in trying to solve the problem, I do. You know, so I want to be respectful of that, but also outline the problems that we see. So, that, so it is exciting that Satellite Beach is a part of the solution, and so we are a pilot program for the, with the county and partnering with them. On Saturday, December 16th, at 5:45, we will have our annual Jingle Bell Two-Miler that will be held at the Satellite Beach Library. I'm expecting Councilwoman Gibson, or Councilwoman Gibson, to be running in that, right?
I will be.
Okay, see, I told you. And I did post the Twilight Santa schedule on Facebook as well, so that, and I know that we had a partial conflict, but we're resolving that correctly. The other item is that we have entered into an agreement to use DemandStar, which is an online portal used to connect local governments with vendors. And I've been trying to do this since I've been here with the city, and I would like to thank Suzanne Sherman for actually getting this done, finally, four years. And this is where we put out bids or proposals for products or services, and we upload our information onto this computer program, and it makes it available to such a wider audience. So, we're expecting better bids now that we have this in play. We also wanted to let you know that Public Works has applied for a grant through Keep America Beautiful and Coca-Cola to fund 25 recycling containers at city parks, and no match is required for this grant. So, we did not come to you for a formal approval, we just, we went ahead and applied for that. And with that, I am done.
Great.
Can I just add one more announcement? I don't know if everybody got the message, but, you know, they're doing some work at the Satellite Beach Library, they're going to replace the HVAC system there. So, the Satellite Beach Library will be closed for HVAC renovations from Monday, December 18th until Tuesday, January 14th. So, the library will be closed while they do that work there.
Can you say the dates again? I'm sorry.
Yes, it's going to be, the library will be closed for HVAC renovations from Monday, December 18th until Tuesday, January 14th, 2018.
Wow.
I knew that was coming, you know, as being on the library board, but I just got that email today, so, just FYI, it's going to be over the Christmas time, so, we're going to be, the library will be closed to replace the much-needed HVAC.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Before we move on to Agenda Item Six, have we heard anything back from the Gersh issue?
Yeah, I ultimately talked to Cliff Reperture, their attorney, I don't know if it was Friday or Monday, and just indicated to him what council had authorized to happen and see what, whether we'll get any different response from them. So, as soon as I hear back, I'll let you know.
Great, thank you very much. Further questions? Thank you, thanks, Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, discuss take action on agreement with Miller Electric Company for security camera. Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. At the October 18th meeting, you all approved the award of the project to Miller Electric based on the piggyback agreement with Osceola County contract. That would be for the installation of the video surveillance system at High Tower Beach. That system will monitor the parking lot, the entrance, the exit, the front of the restrooms and the other areas that we mentioned, along with the pavilions, along with a camera that records the tag number or views the tag numbers of the vehicles coming in and going out. The agreement is ready, and the budget impact is, the $40,000 is already in the 17-18 budget on the capital assets fund. The total project cost is $40,682.76, and I would recommend that you all authorize the City Manager to sign the agreement with Miller Electric Company for the purchase of the video surveillance equipment and installation at High Tower Park.
Thank you, Chief. Questions from council before we open up for public comment? Okay. At this time, open up public comment on Agenda Item Six. Here and back to council for motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the City Manager to sign an agreement with Miller Electric Company for the purchase of the video surveillance equipment and installation at High Tower Beach Park.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion? I'm hopeful Chief, on the day, propose to start this project, is this?
I believe that they, we're looking at the starting installation within 90 days from getting the contract signed and all of that, I believe that's the timeline that they're looking at.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Further, Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Chief, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, discuss take action on Resolution 998. Jim?
Resolution Number 998, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Beavard County, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a utility tax revenue note dated December 8, 2017, for the purpose of financing the purchase and acquisition of the real property formerly used as the Satellite Beach Post Office parking lot, pledging utility tax revenues to secure payment of the principal of an interest on such note, making certain covenants and agreements for the benefit of the holder of the note, authorizing certain officials and employees of the city to take all actions required in connection with the issuance and delivery of such note, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing an effective date that's reading a Resolution Number 998.
Thank you very much.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 998.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Breimer?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Osmer.
Actually, it should just be approved, the resolution.
Approve the resolution, I'll amend my motion.
Thank you.
I amend my second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Further discussion from council? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Seven. Here and number, back to council, good job, I think, here.
Yeah.
There's not much property left, and I think this is thinking good for the future. Good job, thank you. Courtney, Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Eight, discuss take action on application for recreational trails grant.
Good evening. Before you tonight is a request to authorize staff to apply for a DEP recreational trails grant, same grant that we used to put the trail around the sports park many years ago. This grant, we originally requested, and my apologies for this, $100,000, we're going to go out for the $100,000 and with a 40% match on our part, but looking at, and that would have been just for the trail around the park and some multi-generational exercise equipment, that would have paid for the trail and that. But looking further into it, there's opportunities for some other amenities that we would like to add, like benches, water fountain, a couple of water fountains, trash cans, parking area, and possibly the solar ballards that we have at Shell Street, putting ballards around, because this time of year, it gets dark kind of early, and folks want to go out and walk, they'd be much safer. And if you put lights too high, then, you know, you're bothering the neighbors, and so you'll get complaints there. So, we also have the kiosks that we'd like to, the educational kiosks or informational kiosks. So, anyway, all that, all that is going to cost more money. So, we would like to increase what we're requesting here to the $200,000 maximum, which our match would be $80,000. And we would try to lower that, of course, with some in-kind match, but we would like to at least have that latitude.
Good thinking. So, you want 200 instead of 100?
Yes, sir.
And instead of this 40, we want 80?
Right.
Questions?
Alan, for, as far as applying for this, you don't have to set up a specific design of any type at this point, do you? I mean, you, it doesn't, you don't have to submit your design proposal with the grant application?
There, we have a preliminary design?
Okay.
That, you know, basically, we're ready to go out to bid. So, what we have is what we're submitting, just the trail around the pond, a, I mean, it can change.
It can, that's my next question, is it can change?
Yeah, you can, you can change it, it doesn't have to be hard and fast, as long as you're providing what the intent of the grant request was.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Ray, thanks.
Any other questions?
I do have a quick question. When we were initially talking about doing this project, we were talking about the certain amount of money we were going to be spending, and we were talking around, will this kind of keep us within that range, or is this, because it wasn't an additional figure, it would be around $900,000. Is that, is that now bringing it up to a million potentially, or are we going to still kind of keep it all within that, we're going to try to keep it within that same?
Well, I think we've helped ourselves out greatly by the 319 and the TMDO grant that we received, so that has lowered our contribution greatly.
Okay.
So, we'll, I'm almost positive we'll be well under that 940.
Yeah, I think we, with the stormwater side of it, we're contributing $170,000 to that $900,000 project.
All right, sweet.
Further questions? So, just on the project in general, real quick, we've got all permits now.
Yes.
Thank you Senator Mayfield.
Thank you Courtney Barker, thank you Mayor Catino.
I want to make sure that I held up here. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Eight. Floor is open.
So, just really comment.
Say your name.
Jazzy Hennings, Satellite Beach. We had talked about doing the dark skies, I need to address you guys. So, we had discussed doing the dark skies friendly lighting in this new park, because that tied in with our sustainability action plan and moving towards being a dark skies friendly city. And then also, that wouldn't be a nuisance for neighbors in any way, would help keep energy costs down around the park, and, you know, would still allow people to walk safely along the paths. That's my only comment. Yeah, and the ballard lighting would meet that, it's very similar to the Shell Street project, if you go out there and see that at night, that's low-level ballard lighting, that's solar-powered, which, yeah, meets the standards for turtles. Is it covered? Yeah, so they shine down instead of up. Okay, I was picturing something else. Yeah, so, and ballards are, you know, maybe mid-thigh height at the tallest. Okay.
If you go out to Shell Street, like right now, well, this time of evening, you'll be able to see the walkway there, and it's, it looks really nice, and it does light the area pretty well, and it's turtle-safe. Not that we have to worry about turtles down there, so we may have a little brighter light to, you know, be able to have that latitude, but I think it would serve the purpose, and, you know, it keeps the light low, and it's all solar-powered, so there's no cost to it, outside of the cost for the ball.
But we'll make sure that they meet the standards of dark light, dark skies, yeah. Cool, okay, thanks.
Are we still doing the solar kiosk, and we're going to have that, and will the solar be still running, possibly like the fountain and all that stuff? Okay.
Floor is still open for public comments. Okay, here and none, back to council, further council, council comments?
No, I'd make a motion to authorize staff to apply for the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Recreational Trails Program Grant for fiscal year 2018, 2019, in the amount of $200,000, which is $120,000 grant funds with an $80,000 city match.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion from council? Here and none, Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Move on to Agenda Item, thank you Alan.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, discuss take action on agreement with the Indian River Lagoon Council for National Estuary Program Restoration Grant. Nick?
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
The agenda item you have in front of you is recommended action, as we discussed previously with the National Estuary Program Grant Program. This would be to increase the effectiveness of the existing stormwater infrastructure onto the DeSoto Parkway to create swales, and it's already been funded, and we're already at the point now where we just had to agree on language, and after working with James Beatle and Frank from the NEP, we have now reached an agreement on the language with only changing minor details and keeping everything in line with the original agreement, we're now ready to move forward with the project in 2018.
Great, thank you very much. Again, questions from council? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Nine. Here and none, back to council. I can tell you the National Estuary Program has, Nick, you know, I've talked a lot, there's going to be a lot of grants and money coming, and I think the more we stay on this, the better it's going to be for us.
I'm actually having to hold him off. Because we can't do that much at once.
Too many grants.
Right.
It's good, grants has always served us extremely well on many things when we need the grant, so.
Well, you know, the other part about grants, it's just like scholarships, you hate to see them go and nobody applies for them. I know we've heard it a few times from FDEP and stuff like that, where they said, we had extra money left over this year because not enough people applied for that, you know? And then it was filled bad, it's like, well, there was free money that we could have asked for, you know, and not have to come out of our budget to do that. So, yeah, anytime we have an opportunity like that, great, take advantage of it.
I'll continue to write more grants this nature.
Okay.
No, you have not.
At this time, I'd like to open up for public comment on Agenda Item Nine. Here and none, back to council.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute the agency cost share agreement with the Indian River Lagoon Council for the DeSoto Parkway Drainage Basin Stormwater Enhancement Project.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gibson, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Any further discussion from council? Here and none, Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Nick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, bud, appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda, you're with us again, Agenda Item Ten, discuss take action on the purchase of electrical vehicle.
All right, thank you very much. In fiscal year 2017, 2018, the budget previously allocated for $30,000 for the purchase of an administrative vehicle for the Community Development Department was approved, and this Community Development Department is now seeking approval to purchase a pre-owned low-mileage electric vehicle and an EV charging station to be installed here at City Hall. This purchase would be in lieu of the previously budgeted gas-powered vehicle, and the revised purchase choice will follow the Sustainability Action Plan and complete two green achievement targets with this one action. There'll be completing green achievement target number four and six. Number four is to install at least one electric vehicle charging station at a municipal building, and number six is to replace all fossil-fuel-based city administrative vehicles with electric vehicles. By installing the EV charging station and the vehicle, we take care of both of those in one shot. Basically, the costs, based on the cost analysis worked up by myself and Zach Eichels, our IF intern, we went ahead and looked at a number of different vehicles available in both makes and models and other makes and models that were available for the electric vehicles, and we came down to two that seemed to be the most, not only economical, but practical for our needs. So, we have the Chevy Volt and the Nissan Leaf. And if we come up with a vehicle under 50,000 miles and under $18,000, we will be able to not only purchase the vehicle, but then for another additional $7,000, $7,180, purchase a charging station with two charge points. It'll be the same brand as the charging station that currently exists at Pelican Park, so we don't have to go through any bidding or anything like that, we'll just use the same brand that works over there. We will leave in the $30,000 that's been allocated, $4,000 to $5,000 for installation, to install the charging station. Speaking with Alan Potter, Director of Public Works, $4,000 to $5,000 should be adequate to install the charging station here at City Hall. So, we'll get a good deal. A little quick bit of information about that, and you'll probably hear more about this in the open public comment, every thousand miles driven by an electric vehicle car saves 39.5 gallons of gasoline or two layers of oil. So, there's plenty of information about why this is beneficial, if you have more questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Reaching out to the public and working with the EV Drivers Club, they helped with a few testimonials and some more information to help decide this decision, and staff asked that council approves this change to purchase an EV vehicle and a charging station in lieu of the previously approved fuel-based vehicle.
Nick, thank you very much. The funds there, because we're, it's within the $30,000 that you've already allocated.
And that's, we kind of went through some learning process here. So, at your next, in your next budget, you'll see an increase in costs, because we have an upfront increase in cost for an electric vehicle, but you have a long-term savings, obviously, and that information's in your packet. So, what the good thing about this year is we will get a pre-owned vehicle, but we're also putting in the charging station, which we won't have to do anymore, you know? So, this, this will provide, this process has provided a lot of information for our future budgeting purposes, in addition to, you know, adding our first electric vehicle to our fleet, so.
Thank you. Questions from council, Mark?
Where are you going to park it at night, Nick?
Right out here in front of City Hall.
Doesn't need to be in a garage or anything like that to keep it protected?
Nope.
Okay. It's not lining up at Catino's house, is it?
We were just going to use his electricity and just run an extension cord in his house.
Well, if I do say on that, during the day, the idea is that the public will be able to use the charging station.
Right, because we obviously won't be using it.
And at night, we would be able to use the charging station.
Okay.
Do you get anybody to donate the charging station or grants?
Well, we will get a discount, $1,000, if we're going with the same company.
Any further?
I would just like, I would just like to comment, I'm glad to see and happy to see that we used our Space Coast EV drivers for a good resource, for good information. I know that the city and us have kind of partnered together on stuff like this, and I think that was a great move to get some, somebody who can speak well to that, and again, be a good resource to that. To me, by having their information kind of says, look, we did our homework, we researched it, we got good answers, we can feel good about it, because obviously, we're not a bunch of experts on EVs, so I'm just happy we did that.
We really appreciate them, so.
Yeah, I think it was a really good move.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'll put up for public comment on this agenda item.
Hi, everybody, Zach Eichels, I'm your intern. I'm the unhappy owner of a Honda Civic totally gas-powered car, but I would, I am a member of their club, thanks for taking me, even though I don't have an EV that's coming. I just wanted, in the packet that Nick was reading from, I wanted to go over some stats just to, you know, talk about this subject. EVs have definitely reached maturity level for a city like this that requires a lot of city driving, especially over such a small area. They could go even further, but it's not needed. International Energy Agency in 2017 Global EV Outlook Report states that there are now over 2 million electric cars worldwide, with China accounting for 40% of those EVs sold. Netherlands, Britain, France have already pledged to phase out internal combustion engine vehicles by, or before the middle of the century, along with dozens of cities, so this is definitely a city-led thing as well. Paris, Madrid, Mexico City, Oslo, Copenhagen, Milan. According to the Electric Vehicle Charging Association, the US now has over 50,000 public and private EV charging stations that will have over 7 million EVs on the road, host 7 million EVs on the road by 2025 in the United States. Cities are beginning large-scale EV adoption into their fleets, citing fuel costs, cutting our country's dependence on foreign fossil fuels and fossil fuels in general, major public health hazards like smog, as we see in China or Los Angeles, and the cutting of climate- health hazards like smog, as we see in China or Los Angeles, and the cutting of climate change-inducing greenhouse gas emissions. New York City hosts -- plans to host 2,000-strong EV fleet by 2025, and Los Angeles and Seattle have pledged to only use electric buses by 2025. Another example of the city doing something really cool, Atlanta recently passed, like two weeks ago, an ordinance that now mandates all new parking areas devote 20% of their space to EV -- to be EV-ready. What else we got? Auto giants like Volvo and GM have announced that they will begin building business models that phase out completely internal combustion vehicles, while we have companies like Tesla spearheading major advances in EV technology every month, it seems like. And EV ownership costs, when lifetime maintenance insurance, fuel, taxation, purchase price, and depreciation are factored in, are cheaper than an internal combustion vehicle in the United States now, according to a recent study from researchers at the University of Leeds. The U.S. average per gallon of gas is $2.50, while it would cost $1.10 per e-gallon to charge an electric vehicle, according to Department of Energy. So just wanted to give you some of those facts.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jazzy Henning, Satellite Beach. Okay, so I leased a Nissan Leaf for two years, and the choice between these two vehicles for me would be super easy for a number of reasons. One, the Nissan Leaf is a fully-electric vehicle, so it's gonna have zero emissions. It does not have a radiator, there's no transmission, and there's no, like, engine that's gonna have oil in it. So you're really getting away from all the maintenance, which would be another cost of having the vehicle. Really, the only fluid that the Leaf has is the windshield wiper fluid. So even the brakes should be electric, depending on the year model that you get. And so, I mean, it was a really easy car to own, to not have to do anything other than just plug it in like I did my cellphone. And going back to a combustion engine vehicle was very, very difficult. I'm still struggling with it every time I have to get an oil change. It's a lot of maintenance, you know? So having a fully-electric makes the difference. But also, the Volt is not a fully-electric vehicle. It's a plug-in hybrid. So we're gonna lose a lot of the benefits of that, and technically, we wouldn't be in line with our Sustainability Action Plan, because this wouldn't be -- this wouldn't be replacing our dependence on fossil fuels, because it would still be using oil and requiring oil changes, as well as gas anytime we went outside of the parameters of that. And, I mean, range really isn't an issue for city use, and once you have the low battery warning, you have about 20 miles to get where you need to go, which you'd have to be pretty far in Satellite Beach and circle the city a couple times to be able to plug it in. So that would be good. At the time that I chose to go with the Nissan Leaf, I did a little bit of extra research, and I don't know if this is still true, but at the time, insuring the Volt was also more expensive. I believe the rates were about double. I don't know the reasoning for that, and I wouldn't just take my word for it, you know, definitely it's worth looking into. But the Leaf was comparable to any other type of insurance. And the only other thing that I would take into account is that sometimes for more fuel-efficient and EV vehicles, the tires are of lower quality. So, and those are generally just the tires that come with them. You can get better tires for them. So that might be another initial upfront cost, but once you put good tires on them, you'll get, you know, a standard use out of them.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. My name's Josh Pritt, I'm the co-founder of the Space Coast EV Drivers, and I'm glad you're still using this as a resource. That was one of the main reasons I started the club, was to answer questions that the community, so anyone has about EVs, we're the ones to ask, because we drive them every day to work, to school, the grocery store, on vacations, right? So we'll be able to answer any question you can throw at us, pretty much. Plus, people like me who are super nerds, computer nerds, we keep all of our gas receipts. So I have the Chevy Volt, so I do have the gas part. And on start, you can log in and download your spreadsheet of every single charging session, and it tells you exactly how many kilowatt-hours came off the meter into the car, so you can get exact electric costs. And so for me and my Chevy Volt, back in 2011, I got a 2012 Volt, leased that for three years, and then I turned that in and got a 2015 Volt, leased that for three years, and now my girlfriend has a used 2017 Volt. And at 2016 or newer, they changed it. Now, instead of going 38, 40 miles before it switches the gas, now it goes 53, almost 60 miles before it switches the gas. So I was super jealous of that with my 2015 right at the cutoff. But anyway, so for me, I drive about 30 miles a day. Do you know how many miles a day you might be driving this car? Is there like a?
So the issues with the range and the reason why we had the Volt included was that if we were to go to a conference in Tallahassee, if we were to go to Orlando, that we might have a further range.
You'd like plan it out a little more, right?
Right.
That's the one good thing about the Volt is you don't have to plan as much, although as charging stations start getting installed everywhere, like you're gonna install one here, you're helping solve that problem, right? And the idea with charging stations, people haven't gotten their minds yet until you actually drive it, is you don't stop at a charging station like you do a gas station. You plug up at your home every day, so every day you leave your house with a full tank. It's like the gas ferries came in the middle of the night while you're sleeping and filled up your tank. And then you get wherever you're going, where you're gonna be parked anyway, and hopefully, like here, there'll be a charging station already there waiting on you. And so while it's parked anyway, it's charging. You don't sit there and wait on it, you know, that's what people think, right? You don't, you charge at your house and you charge where you're going, where it's gonna be parked anyway. But anyway, with my Volt, I drive about 30 miles a day, so if that's what you're gonna do, you'll probably get similar numbers, but about 30 miles a day, you're well within that battery, right? And then so we'd go to Disney every once in a while, and about, that'd be me halfway to Disney, and then it switches the gas, get me there, but then I plug in at Disney and do the same thing coming home. Halfway's all-electric and then use gas. But so with all that, my average since 2011 is my power bill went up $18 a month, and I buy four gallons of gas every three months. My record is five straight months on one tank of gas, so it was about 5,600 miles on one tank. So it depends on how often you go out of town or out outside that battery range, is how far you'll go on a tank of gas. There's some people who have a Volt, they've gone all year on one gallon of gas, so effectively got 12,000 miles per gallon out of it. But, so as far as you guys, if you have the Volt, if you stay within that battery range most of the time, you should see similar savings in costs, so about $18 a month electricity, and then four gallons of gas every three months. But again, we're here if you have any more questions, and answer them tonight or anytime in the future. You can just email us. Have more business cards if you have more questions, you can always email us.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your help.
I have some brochures for you that would be helpful. These are great. These are generic brochures, so I suspect that some of you probably aren't seen them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I want to say thank you so much for letting us talk to you. My name is Phil Stasik. I'm from North Maridale, also a member of the Space Coast EV Drivers. I'm also a member of the Central Florida Electric Vehicle Association. Been driving electric and electrified vehicles since 2004. We bought our first Toyota Prius back then, so my wife and I have driven 215,000 miles in that car. We also have a Volt, we got about 100,000 miles in that, so we can give you personal, direct experience on that. However, I've also probably driven about a dozen other types of electric vehicles over those years, including an electric school bus, by the way, if you've ever thought about that, they're out there. Our goal is to be a resource to you. We are not paid by anybody, we are not endorsing any product or any manufacturer or any particular scheme of electric vehicles. We just love electric vehicles, and we're volunteering our time to you and to anybody that will -- that needs information. It's new technology, in a sense, although it's actually very, very old technology. Electric vehicles were actually some of the very first automobiles that were ever built. So go back 100 years and you'll find people driving electric vehicles. Long story, and I know you don't have all night to sit and listen to all this, but the bottom line is very simple. This is technology that is proven, it is reliable, it will save you money. You're a good steward of the citizens of Satellite Beach of their tax money by making this investment. I can assure you that you will enjoy driving this car. One of the things I love to tell people is that electric vehicles are like driving a BMW, but you pay a Chevy price or a Nissan price. You know, you have a couple of choices available to you as you make this investment. I have read the full packet of information that you've gotten, by the way, it was very well-prepared. So you've got a good packet of information to make a good decision, and I think that everything you've seen has been well-prepared for you. A question that is often asked, typical questions that people ask about electric vehicles, how far can they go? I think you probably have already heard those numbers. This car that you're -- that they were talking about, the 2014 Volt that they were kind of leaning toward, you could expect to get 45 to 50 miles of range out of that electric battery, driving around before it switches over to gas, unless you take it out on the interstate and stop on it and go faster, which case you're gonna get a little less range. Total range for that vehicle is about 400 miles. I happened to actually, just a few minutes ago, be charging over at the Pelican Beach Park Charging Station. By the way, I want to thank you for that, that's a wonderful thing. I've charged there many times, and it is a wonderful thing. Another question that people often ask is, how long will the battery last? How many times do I have to change this battery? Well, I can tell you that specific to the Volt, this is the thing that I -- we all look at very closely, because we all communicate with other electric vehicle drivers, but the Volt, essentially, the oldest Volt that is out there driving right now, people that drive them the most, have been -- there's a guy that we know that's up in Michigan who drives to work every day across the state of Michigan. He's got 400,000 miles on his Volt, and his battery has not lost any strength at all. Part of the design, we could talk about that later if you have questions. The bottom line is you're probably never going to change the battery, you will probably never change the brakes. There are many, many things. We were talking about oil changes earlier. You might change the oil in this car, depending on your use, maybe once every two years-ish. The reality is that in our driving, my wife and I, we, again, we drive our Volt a lot, 70% of our driving is all-electric. We've driven to Chicago, we've driven, you know, it's up to see the eclipse in Tennessee, we've drive all over the state of Florida with this car, and that's why 30% of our driving is gasoline. Bottom line is, whatever you choose, if you choose an electric vehicle or an electrified vehicle, whatever type you choose, it will be a good choice, and you'll be, again, good stewards of the taxpayers' money here in Satellite Beach. And I want to say thank you for creating the very EV-friendly, the very environmentally-friendly atmosphere that you have. Do you have any questions? If you have anything later, my car's outside, I've got it ready to go for you if you want to go for a test drive. Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it very much. Floor's still open? There are no further back to council? Further council comments or staff?
I just want to say one thing. So I'm all about electric vehicles. And initially coming into this, I was kind of hesitant and concerned, because the Chevy Volt is the more expensive of all the items, the vehicles that we're looking at. And, you know, your savings isn't gonna be as high. But I felt a little bit better after having a conversation with you, because we do, and I know that the electric vehicle definitely pulls the plug, or plugs it in, on us being fully-electric, but we do have this little bit of a dependency on needing the range if we do intend on using it to drive. And we do have the situation where we do get a hurricane, if we lose electricity, then we do lose the inability, we do not have the ability to use the vehicle to get around. Obviously, we'd have other vehicles, but I'm just kind of going through where my brain was initially coming into this, is I had a lot of questions, and I was hesitant on why not the Leaf, because I was leaning towards the Leaf, to be completely honest with you. But I do feel comfortable that, you know, in the future, we could always get one, because I guess the new Leaf is even better. So maybe when we're ready to buy another vehicle or use one, we'll have the better range with the Leaf, so.
Thank you. Questions?
Oh.
That's a good way. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a pre-owned electric vehicle and a new EV charging station.
Second?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Any further discussion from council? Here and Grace, excuse me.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Nick, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Good job. One question before we leave on that. We have generators too, so we can, we'd always have power, right, to charge that vehicle.
Yes and no. I mean, those generators are sized for the building that they're powering, not to add on a bunch of other stuff to it. So just, the other, the biggest concern with us was, we have staff that's just new to this, and I didn't want them to be worried about driving to Orlando and not being used to that. So our first car, we felt it was important to have that option. As we ease into the use and our staff gets used to mapping out their trips and things like that, then we can go to fully-electric vehicles. But it is a misunderstanding that since we're so little, we only drive in little areas, but that's not true. Our staff goes to meetings all over the state of Florida and sometimes even out of state, so we have to have those options to be able to have the range.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Seth. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11, which is Discuss Take Action on the Creation of a Sustainability Board Climate Ambassador Committee. And with that, at your desk should be an additional name or a supplement to the names that are on the packet, okay?
Okay.
Just let everybody know.
So on August 29th, we held our first group of, first meeting with a group of residents who I had put together to kind of give us some input on some issues surrounding changing our land development regulations for resiliency and sustainability. And as we were working with that, I was really intending for the group to just kind of give me some initial advice. I get nervous when we're looking at pretty big issues, such as land development regulation changes. And I wanted to make sure that things that were in my mind were important to the community as a whole. So, but once we started meeting with that group, it became clear that this group had a lot of potential to continue moving through a lot of the complicated subjects of land development regulations, and I wanted to make sure that we were doing that compliant with state law and sunshine law. So we are recommending that you take my little climate ambassador team and make them an ad hoc committee and appoint them formally. And at that time, you know, we have been taking notes and sending out summaries of the meetings, but we'll advertise them and have minutes and record them to make sure that we are fully compliant and transparent with Florida sunshine law. And I did ask the group if they were interested in being appointed. The members that you see listed here have indicated they are. And then we wanted to add Dylan Gibson, who had indicated that he was interested in participating, and there's a resume. I put this out there, because everyone else that's on this list, I know very personally, I know them pretty well, but I did not know Dylan, and I wanted to make sure that you had the background in front of you. But I think, you know, anybody who wants to participate on something like this, I'm all, you know, open arms, come on in. So I would recommend you add that name to the list.
Question, Courtney. Does Dylan live in? Okay, thank you.
Up there.
I'm Dylan.
Hey, Dylan. You, Dylan lives in the city?
As far as we know, yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. I have attended, I believe, most of the ambassador meetings. I think they're run great. It's a good thing we're doing it. We need to take a look at all these different options, and it's pretty diverse with people here and the views, and it's a good thing.
So are you looking for a motion for these nine plus one, just plus Dylan?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the creation of a Sustainability Board Climate Ambassador Committee and approve the initial appointment of the members, membership being what is on the memo dated, what is the date today? The memo that we have in our packet, plus, plus the inclusion of Mr. Dylan Gibson, so it's a total of 10.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion from council?
I just have a quick question. Is, on what day is, ooh?
Sometimes I do it with my feet. No, I didn't do that one. That was you.
This is my electrical personality.
Yeah.
What, are we gonna continue on the same day for the meeting in this? Is that the intention? And was that on Tuesday?
Tuesday, yeah. Basically, every other Tuesday. And it's pretty, a pretty intense schedule, honestly. So some people might not be able to make the whole thing. We were just trying to keep it pretty informal. We were just trying to keep it pretty informal, so we weren't going to elect chairs or anything like that. I was just going to run the meetings like we have been now. I just wanted to make sure that we advertise them, make them open to the public, provide for public comment, you know, that type of thing, and make sure that we're compliant with sunshine law.
And it'll also be at 6:00 PM?
Yeah, you know, we start at 6:00. We usually end at 8:30, sometimes 9:00, because it goes...
We're not going to appoint, or our discussion was, liaison to that board, correct?
It's really up to council. I don't, we don't need one, but if you would like to, and, and we can always advertise it accordingly if you want to come, that more than one council may be there.
Okay. I'd be going to them, they're really good.
And I think I would just do, as you said, I would just advertise...
Okay, we'll be glad to do that.
One or more of us may, may be there.
Yeah. I intend on going to some of them, just had things going on on Tuesdays.
Okay, further discussion? This time, open up Agenda Item 11 for public comment. Here are none, back to council. Any further? Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, thank you, staff. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, discuss, take action on Save Our Lagoon Indian River Lagoon Local Infrastructure Surtax Interlocal Agreement. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. We are asking you to, to approve another interlocal agreement for the surtax, which would assign the TMDL credits based on 2016 population estimates, and this was a negotiation that occurred over a period of months. We have a previous agreement, we are now asking you to replace that with this one. We did not want to have an amendment to the previous agreement because it would just be confusing to the public. So this is a whole new agreement intended to replace the previous one. This agreement basically is a negotiated way to distribute TMDL credits when, when we apply for lagoon tax funds. And so, in a nutshell, if we apply for a stormwater project through the lagoon tax, if we say, for example, we have 40% of that covered by grants we wrote or money that we are putting in, then 40% of the TMDL credits will be assigned solely to the city of Satellite Beach. The remaining 60% that's funded through the lagoon tax, 60% of those TMDL credits will be distributed in the same way that this agreement outlined. The best part of that is when another project in another area does the same thing, we will get a portion of those credits, so that's assigned throughout the whole, the whole community. So it benefits the whole, the whole county.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
So that's why, when it says here budget impacts, it varies based on the revenues collector, that's, that's the explanation you just gave, I guess, right? Okay.
Any further report, open up for public comment? Thank you. Open up Agenda Item 12 for public comment. Here are none, bring it back to council, further council?
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Local Infrastructure Surtax Interlocal Agreement.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further? Here are none. Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, staff. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, which is appointments for Vice Mayor, Board Liaison, Space Coast League of Cities Voting Delegates, and Alternate South Beach Coalition, and there needs to be an addition to this TPO, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So those are the positions we need, probably best take them one at a time, and we'll start with Vice Mayor. So we need a motion of someone who wants to be Vice Mayor?
In, in light of someone not being here, I would make a motion that Councilman Dominic Montero be Vice Mayor. Does he object?
This is what happens when you don't attend meetings.
Scoot him back here a little. Hasn't said anything to make.
I got, I got no objection.
Okay, I have a motion by now Vice Mayor Osmer.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gibson. Any discussion?
No.
Great, Grace?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to say I think he would be honored, and it's funny that he's not here, but he would be happy.
He would want it. Also, thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Okay.
Be more than happy to step in should he not be available.
Looking at, if you would, council liaisons, the only person that had come to me is Dominic, and he would like to stay on the pension board. Is everybody feel comfortable where they're at?
Yeah. I'm okay with it.
The only other, well, okay, we're fine there, then in, Courtney, you'll be the alternate voting member for Space Coast League of Cities, you're down there, is that comfortable with you? Okay. Now, Steve, you were also on South Beach Coalition.
Correct.
Okay. There, it's our turn for TPO.
Correct.
Correct.
So you would be a voting member.
You would be a voting member.
Correct.
Okay? You good with it?
Yeah, I...
Look at the time.
I discussed that with Courtney. Currently, they're doing it at 3:30, is that what we said?
Yes, say, the TPO normally meets at 9:00 on Thursday, the same week, basically the second Thursday of the month.
Right, following the coalition meeting.
Correct, and following the coalition meeting. However, Commissioner Barfield has been appointed to the Expressway Authority, which meets at the same time. So they moved the whole TPO meeting to 3:30. They're having a hard time getting a quorum because of that, so they may be moving it back, but right now, it's at 3:30. Stu Glass has indicated that he is also the Coalition appointee for the Atlantic?
Right.
And that he would be happy to be the vice delegate, should you not be able to attend that.
And who is that?
Stu Glass from the Atlantic.
Okay.
And I will be going with you to the TPO meeting, so.
Which, which we're going to make, because if I'm staying on the coalition, which means I will see Stu...
Right.
Correct.
At the coalition meeting anyways.
And they'd be able to figure that out.
And, yeah, so between the two of us, I mean, I'm sure we're going to represent the coalition since we're both going to be there, and we'd be the voting members, so I don't think we'd have an issue between that. And, and my schedule may change.
If you, and if you have a problem, we can always come back and change the, you guys can switch it around. But it's very important that we have a voting member at the TPO.
Right.
So since we've basically staying where we're at, we just have consensus?
Consensus, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on any of these appointments? I think we take care of them all in one, Steve. Okay?
Okay.
Great. Thank you.